A brief statement before we start our meeting. As a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to limit in-person contact and promote social distancing, Prosper Portland is holding this meeting electronically as allowed by state law. All members of the commission are attending remotely by phone, and Prosper Portland has made several avenues available for the public to listen to the audio broadcast of this meeting. The public can also provide written testimony to the commission by emailing FeigenbutzP, that's F-E-I-G-E-N-B-U-T-Z-P at prosperportland.us. I will now turn it over to the Tax Supervising Conservation Commission, and welcome to all of you.
Great, welcome to you too. Nice to see you all this afternoon. I will now call to order the annual Prosper Portland annual budget hearing. My name is David Behringer, and I'm the Chair of the Tax Supervising and Conservation Commission, and I welcome you all to our hearing this afternoon. I will now ask my fellow commissioners and the staff to introduce themselves and to state if they have any business relationship with your district that could be perceived as a conflict of interest.
Good afternoon, I'm James Offsink, Vice Chair of the Tax Supervising and Conservation Commission. This is my fifth year with the commission, so fifth time getting to meet with many of you. Look forward to the conversation today. When I'm not here at TSCC, I work at Oregon Health and Science University, and I don't have a business relationship with the district.
Good afternoon, I'm Margot Norton. I am also in my fifth year with the commission. I am retired, but before my retirement, I had a long career as a government finance officer. I retired from Metro, the regional government, and I also have no conflict with the district.
Good afternoon, my name is Mark Wobold. This is my fourth year with the TSTC, and I have no conflict of interest with the district. My day job, I'm the Senior Policy Analyst for the President's, President at Portland State University.
Hi, everyone. My name is Harmony Kido. This is my first year with the TSCC, so so nice to meet all of you. I am, in past life, was a middle school math and science teacher. I still work in education now, just not as a teacher. I have two small children, three and six, who are in the house, so I apologize for any background noise that may happen. This morning, they were meowing throughout several meetings, and I have no conflict of interest with the district.
And my name is Craig Gibbons, I'm staff to the commission.
Good afternoon, I'm Truney Betchardt.
With those introductions, Chairman Cruz, would you like to have your district representatives introduce themselves too, please?
Yes, would the commissioners like to introduce themselves then? Anyone like to go first?
I am, sorry, I'm Willie Myers. I'm the Executive Secretary Treasurer of the Columbia Pacific Building and Construction Trades Council and Vice Chair on the Prosper Portland Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers.
And I'm Alicia Moreland-Cafia, and physician by day, mother 24/7.
Commissioner Gambetti or Commissioner Platt? I think Commissioner Gambetti, you're on mute. You're still on mute.
Can you hear?
I'm having problems, I can't hear you through my phone. This is not going to work.
Okay. Commissioner Platt?
Sure. Hi, I'm Commissioner Platt, Peter Platt, and by day, family owner and operator of Andina Restaurant in Portland, and Commissioner as needed. So, welcome and thanks for being here.
Great, thank you. And I'm Tavo Cruz, I'm the Board Chair. I'm a lawyer by day, business lawyer by day, and I also have a young dog, so there could be some barking at some point during the call, so please forgive me in advance. And Commissioner Gambetti, we can come back to you whenever you are ready. Okay, but thank you very much to the commission for being here today to meet with us. Mr. Behringer, we lost you. You're on mute.
Clicked off there. Thank you. Welcome, welcome again, and thank you for your introductions. On behalf of the commission, I would like to express our appreciation for how your organization has stepped up to meet the current health, public health crisis within the scope of your own mission. We understand that forecasting the budget for the next year is a challenge right now. Managing your organization will require extra efforts as the year unfolds. With that in mind, the focus of our questions during today's hearing may be somewhat different than in past years. For the public for whom the TSCC commissioners represent, this is an opportunity to hear directly from the accountable officials about how you will manage through this uncertainty. If you have some brief introductory remarks, we will hear those first, and then we will ask our questions and have a discussion with you about your budget. Following that discussion, if there are any people from the public who wish to speak or have comments, we will take those. With that, I will turn it over to you, Commissioner, Chair Cruz.
Great, thank you. I don't believe we have any introductory comments unless Executive Director Brannum, did you have anything you wanted to interject?
No, just, thank you Chair Cruz and TSCC commissioners for being here with us. We appreciate your flexibility as well, and are glad to see you even if we can't be in person, it's nice to see you virtually.
Thank you. So why don't we go ahead with the questions? Is that where we are now?
Yeah, I keep flying off here. Yes, thank you. With that, we'll start our questions. Mark?
Okay, I've got the first one. This is one we've been asking all of our districts. It's been very interesting to hear how they all respond differently in different circumstances. So, the question goes, in the current year, ending June 30th, is the district expecting any year-end budgetary problems arising from revenue shortfalls or unanticipated expenditures due to the COVID-19 situation? And what impact will this have on the district's ending fund balances that are not yet reflected in the upcoming budget?
Thank you, that's a, that's a great question, and I'm going to take this first one. Prosper Portland is experiencing major decreases in property revenue and loan collection revenue in the fourth quarter as a result of the impact of COVID-19. Prosper Portland anticipated about $12 million in the fiscal year 2019 to 2020 adopted budget, that's 2.7 million in loan collections and about 9.3 million in property income. This number has been revised downward in the most recent budget amendment to approximately $7 million. Approximately $600,000 of this figure is represented by loan and lease deferrals between April and June. Most of the revenue reduction has been from the loss of parking revenue from several garages, as well as income from the inn at the convention center. These impacts have been incorporated into the most recent budget amendment for the current fiscal year, and we'll be addressing that later in our meeting today, and represented in the estimated ending balances for each TIF district and the estimated beginning fund balances for the next fiscal year, excuse me. The reduced loan and property income and City of Portland General Fund for the next fiscal year required reductions in Prosper Portland's operating budget, and in certain cases, specific TIF district expenditures will be reduced to balance the budget. Most reductions are addressed in the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 budget. This budget incorporates a $1.2 million reduction in Prosper Portland's operating budget from what was planned in February's requested budget. This includes a net 7% reduction to planned personnel costs through an agreement reached with our Union Local 75, where non-management staff will be taking 12 furlough days. Management will also be taking a 7.5% pay reduction from what was planned. Three currently vacant positions will also not be filled. And finally, reductions were also made to the general materials and services budget. The planned operating budget reductions will not offset the income loss in fiscal year 2019 to 2020 and fiscal year 2020 to 21 completely. The loss of program income requires reductions to projects and programs in certain districts where the losses are higher. The most significant impact is in the Oregon Convention Center TIF fund, where the reduction of property income from the convention center garage and the inn at the convention center necessitated reductions in loan and grant programs in the district. Also, due to the reduction in the City of Portland General Fund resources, some program reductions, about 5% on average, are necessary to balance the general fund budget, in addition to the operating budget reductions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have the next question, it's about the next current, or the next fiscal year, and you've told us about the assumptions that you've made, which are very good. But for the upcoming budget, should the economy remain stalled or decline even more? Where are the district's greatest vulnerabilities, and how will the district monitor and respond timely if revenue collections go off track or if unanticipated service requirements continue?
This is Commissioner Gambetti. I think I've resolved my sound troubles of, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So I can, I can take this one, it's a, it's a good question, and a good follow-up. So the current fiscal year budget, the fiscal year 2021 budget includes conservative estimates, which assume the economic shock continues and impacts loan collection and property revenue. So, for example, the operating revenue for the inn at convention centers programmed at 20% of what was planned in the original forecast. Parking revenue at various facilities is programmed at 50% of the original budget forecast, and some of the leasing activity has been revised to 30 to 50% of what was originally forecast for the year. So that these conservative estimates call for Prosper Portland to take steps to reduce its operating budget, and in projects and programs in certain areas as addressed by Chair Cruz in the prior question. The five-year forecast includes an assumption that income from property and loans will be gradually be restored through fiscal year 2021 to 2022, and 2022 to 23, something, the two upcoming fiscal years will gradually see us recover from that. The vulnerabilities are greater in several of the TIF districts, including the Oregon Convention Center and the River District, that are relying on future program income to help continue investment in key initiatives as TIF proceeds sunset. And the general, the city's general fund resources are also a vulnerability, as the city will not have a better understanding of the economic impact of lodging taxes and business license taxes until later this summer and fall. So Prosper Portland is accordingly reserving 2.5% of the approved City General Fund budget, anticipating these resources may be reduced in the fall budget monitoring process by the city. And if there's higher reductions are necessary from the city, then Prosper Portland will reevaluate programming and determine if one-time reserves should be used to backfill any additional losses in order to maintain critical citywide economic development programming during the recovery. And, and staff, you know, monitors the loans and property, the loan and property portfolios closely through monthly budget to actual review, quarterly financial reporting, and through property management activities. Staff will also embark over the next six months to develop an updated forecasting process that leverages new tools like Yardi Property Management and forecasting software to help produce budget updates, as well as more regular updates to Prosper Portland's financial sustainability plan.
Great, thank you. That covers all my question, thank you.
I have the next question. We're wondering about how the economic, the current economic hardship is affecting the funding sources for your work, and specifically, how the agency's public outreach and small business support efforts have changed as a result of the current situation?
Hi, yes, this is Commissioner Platt. I'll endeavor a response. So Prosper Portland and the City of Portland responded fairly quickly by forming the Economic Recovery Task Force, and Prosper immediately deployed three-month deferral options on leases for tenants and also on certain loans. And in partnership with the City of Portland, we launched a $2 million Small Business Relief Fund, providing grants and loans to small businesses. Program guidelines for the loans funded by our EDA revolving loan have been temporarily revised to provide greater flexibility. And this week, we are ready to apply for 1.3 million in new EDA grants to fund EDA loans. Prosper Portland is also anticipated to receive a portion of the federal funding allocated to the City of Portland, notably an additional 1.3 million in community development block grant resources that can add resources to the Small Business Relief Fund. All efforts to respond to the impacts of COVID-19 through the deployment of new resources or pivoting with existing resources are being accomplished by sentry and creding systems to working, or rather creding systems to ensure that the crisis does not exacerbate existing inequities. The agency has pivoted how work is being done. The main program area is currently funded by the City General Fund, cannabis, existing CDVG grants, and enterprise zone resources in order to be responsive to the needs of the community by increasing the provision of light-touch business technical assistance and workforce development services, as an example. We're engaged in listening sessions with businesses from diverse backgrounds and industries, and actively retooling all of our programs to a recessionary posture. Given above financial documents previously noted, general funded cannabis resources received from the City of Portland are now more than ever a critical funding source alongside enterprise zone and community development block grant resources to fund the agency's development work outside of our TIF districts.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Platt. Just so I can get kind of a sense of the scale or what kind of it's looking like exactly, can somebody chime in on just ballpark how many of the small business grants have been given out thus far, and, you know, what's the typical, I don't know, median or whatever mean size of those loans or grants?
Hi, I'm happy to, to take that one. To date, 200, I believe 280 grants have been given, and, I, well, actually, I think it's 200 and, about 250 grants and then about 30 loans. So the grants on average are between, they're between $2,500 and $10,000, so the average is around $5,000. And then the loans, the zero-interest loans could go up to $50,000, and actually, the majority of those were between $40,000 to $50,000.
That's great, thank you. And I don't know if you have it also readily available, that 280 or whatever, how many applications was that compared to?
Yeah, so we received a total between the loan and grant program of about 12,000 applications.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Make sure, double unmute. I have the next question. Just looking a little bit at specifics. We know the budget was prepared and improved in the constantly changing environment due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Now that we've had a little bit more time and a little more information, what budget changes are you planning for adoption or early in the next fiscal year? And we've talked about some of this already.
This, Commissioner Myers, I'm going to take this one. Since we included conservative assumptions to operating income, no changes are planned at this point for adoption and early next fiscal year. Staff has begun analyzing updated assumptions around loan and property income, and will continue to monitor over the summer. There is an early indication that the level of program income from loans could increase slightly, as our initial estimates included in the adopted budget appear to be more conservative. However, as mentioned, general fund resources from the city may further change as the city's overall economic impact from business license and lodging tax becomes better understood in the coming months. Significant changes that deviate from the adopted budget and any potential impacts to the operating budget will be evaluated later in the summer and early fall.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding your earlier discussion about the, the reduction in operating income as a result of deferrals in loan and lease payments. We're interested in the duration of these deferrals, whether you believe they will, they are actually deferrals, or whether they will, will go into default, and what impact that has on your program?
Well, I think I have this one as well. It is anticipated that some of the decreases will be due to deferrals. To date, about $600,000 in loan and lease deferrals have occurred. However, the vast majority is related to losses. As mentioned, most of those losses are due to parking and other operating income that is not occurring with stay-at-home orders, and we anticipate a slow recovery as phase reopening occurs. Some background on how we are working with borrowers and tenants, we're recognizing the devastating financial impacts that the stay-at-home order related to COVID-19 would have on some of our borrowers. In mid-March, we offered a three-month deferral of loan payments for business experiencing, businesses experiencing a decline in revenues. We prioritize public-facing businesses, those that had experienced at least 10% decline in sales, and borrowers, borrowers with annual revenues of $1 million or less. Borrowers who are property owners and requested relief also had to show that the benefit was passed on to their tenants. In all 37 loans, in all 37 loans were placed on a three-month payment deferral. All interest and principal that would have been due over the three months was deferred to the end of the loan term. Given the ongoing public safety requirements in place, we are currently considering extending some form of continued relief to affected borrowers and anticipate that further loan modifications will have to be considered. Prosper Portland offered a three-month deferral of rent and triple-net expenses to our tenants who requested it and experienced a decline of revenue of 10% or more due to COVID. Deferral requests by public-facing businesses that had not been, or excuse me, that had been directly impacted by the new health requirements, retailers, restaurants, bars, coffee shops, food, and entertainment-related, were given priority. If a tenant was not public-facing, they could still request deferral by providing a current year-to-year, excuse me, a year-to-date P&L statement. Approved deferrals were, will be amortized interest-free over the remaining term of their lease. Given the ongoing public safety requirements in place, we are currently considering extending some form of continued relief to affected tenants on a case-by-case basis.
All right, that was what I was interested in. So your 90-day deferral period is coming to a close, and you are considering extending those case-by-case? Any, can, is anything you can share with us about the potential duration of the deferral?
So, we have, the asset and investment team has come up with a proposal for our Finance and Investment Committee to review, and so, you know, we are conscious that the timeline is coming up, but I, you know, I think we anticipate wanting to be both supportive and flexible, but also not take a one-size-fits-all approach, acknowledging that different industries have had different experiences. So some have been open the whole time at reduced capacity. We'll take a different approach there than those who aren't opening till phase three. So, you know, I, it's my, I think we would probably be flexible up for another six months or so, but again, it's really going to be on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
I've got a short follow-up. Have any of our MWESB businesses requested a deferral, or were they prioritized in this process?
Yes, our, our business tenants, we reached out to business tenants and made sure that in particular, Black, Indigenous, and other people of color own businesses were prioritized, both from a tenant standpoint in our spaces, but also from our lending portfolio, which is actually larger. And so we based it both on demographics, but also on the typology of business and the, the size of the business. And I, I know we can follow up with the team to get additional details on the composition of who asked for those, and who, you know, and, and what the makeup was, but we, the team proactively and very quickly after the state of emergency, reached out to make sure that nobody, you know, experienced the stress of needing to pay rent or to, to service a loan that they didn't have resources to cover during this time period.
Thank you.
Okay, I have the next question, and it's about an area that you've already mentioned, so we're just going to explore a little bit more about it, and that's the Economic Recovery Task Force. Can you kind of explain to us what your role is and what the recovery initiatives are that are in the works, and what the economic sectors are that this group is targeting? And in particular, does it include the hotels, which is an industry that's hurting quite badly right at the moment? And then what are the funds, or what fund is or may be made available, and what plans are solidifying for an economic recovery?
Sure, that, I'll take that, that question. So Prosper Portland has staffed and led the Economic Recovery Task Force, providing input and guidance for recovery planning for the city. The task force has been a crucial link between the community, the government, and making certain that all proposals are vetted, and that the community priorities are given keen attention by decision-makers. A central tenet of all of these activities is the consistent application of a strong equity lens to ensure that the most vulnerable businesses, particularly those owned by communities of color, people of color, Black people, have ready access to resources. The economic shock and recovery is significantly impacted by the trajectory of the virus and the necessary public health responses. The Economic Recovery Task Force immediately focused on economic relief, in line with the call to stay home and save lives. The work in, the work was focused, or the, the work in this particular phase was focused on four particular things. One was increased communication. The second was mitigating the economic hardship on impacted individuals. Three was helping small businesses stay solvent and to retain employees as much as they could. And four was evaluating the city and Prosper Portland's best practices, I'm saying best practices, but business practices, and redirecting available resources. The Small Business Relief Fund previously mentioned supported 280 businesses with grants, and 90% of whom went to Black Indigenous people of color for biz, for biz, up to 50 employees, and, and annual revenue under 5 million. The recipients ranged from childcare and preschool providers to health and wellness services to beloved local food carts, consumer product makers and coffee houses, businesses that are essential to the fabric of the community. The Economic Recovery Task Force began focusing on stabilization efforts through a number of work groups, which have led to projects such as getting laptops into communities to address the digital divide issues, webinars for commercial tenants and landlords examining city procurement practices, as well as informing city advocacy priorities for large federal relief. And as Multnomah County prepares for reopening with care, the Economic Recovery Task Force in Prosper Portland are focused on supporting businesses through reopening, listing sessions, and following up on what we hear from businesses in a variety of sectors and different cultural communities. To date, there are three specific elements. One is providing businesses with information that supports a confident and careful reemergence. The second is ensuring that businesses have the tools to reopen, such as personal protective equipment. And three is providing financial and technical assistance as small businesses adopt to changing, or the changing business climate and conditions. The industry-focused listening sessions have tracked with phases of reopening. To date, retail, restaurants, and personal service industries, as well as several of the culturally specific sessions, have been completed. And we're now exploring hosting similar sessions for the Phase Two industries in the governor's re- And we're now exploring hosting similar sessions for the phase-two industries in the governor's reopening framework. And that's slated to start in July. At the moment, we do not have specific programs serving the hotel industry. Our partners at Travel Portland and Travel Oregon have rolled out some support infrastructure. Most hotels have also been able to access the PPP loans and we are seeing upticks in demand for lodging as people are starting to plan travel again. From a resource perspective, we'll continue to deploy general fund cannabis tax, community development block grants, the enterprise and, and enterprise zone as described earlier. And TIF funds are provide, are pivoting to respond or being redirected to respond to changing business needs and community and market realities through support for small business support through tools like our prosperity investment program or PIT. Where there is or we have $3 million committed for the coming year and continuing to support catalytic projects like the 106th and Halsey, the Williams and Russell site, the North by Northeast Community Development Initiative, Cultural Business Hub request, ODOT blocks, 92nd and Herald and Lentz and the Broadway Corridor project. Depending on future economic conditions, we may need to build out significant interventions for parts of the traded sector economy where particularly metals and machinery and athletic and outdoor businesses may be affected. The former due to impacts to regional aerospace and transportation anchors like Boeing and Daimler. The last because of flagging consumer demand for high-end apparel.
Thank you.
That was a long answer. You were expecting more.
Thank you. There, there was a lot in that question.
I have a follow-up. David, I have a follow-up.
Okay, I was just going to say we met with the city council and they are very pleased with how you were implementing the program for, for small businesses. Margot?
Yes, I have a question of curiosity. It's come up twice in your comments so far. The cannabis business tax, how, business income, how, how flexible are those funds? Are they, are, is the eligibility narrow, broad? What can you tell us about that?
So I haven't looked at the regulations really closely, really recently, but from my, my understanding is that support for small businesses, particularly from communities, from diverse communities, those communities that were more, most adversely impacted by the war on drugs is the focus in addition to the, the other portions of it, but so the relevant focus for the programs we lead. And so I think it is relatively flexible. There needs to be a nexus with supporting businesses whose communities were adversely impacted through technical assistance or through direct investments. But it is, it operates more like a general fund resource than it does a tax increment finance or other capital, capital product.
That's interesting. Thank you.
David, you're muted.
Hopped off again, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I can hear you.
Okay, the reason we asked about hotels is we wanted to congratulate you on getting the, in at the convention center up and running. I mean, that was a big undertaking for you over, over a long period of time. But we're just wondering, you know, what is now the risk associated with being in that business? And, and we know that, we're talking with Metro that, you know, conventions will come back, but it could take some time.
Certainly, yeah, the, the, the timing is challenging. We were seeing early indications of, you know, the positive impact of having the long-desired convention center hotel. And as you know, we have a garage that's an integral part of that project. So certainly the impact to the Oregon Convention Center Tax Increment Finance District that you heard Commissioner Cruz talk about at the beginning is, or Chair Cruz rather, talked about at the beginning is reflective of how much we anticipate that will continue to be impacted as an industry. And then, of course, we, we do have a hotel right across the street and at the convention center. And, you know, we're, we're anticipating well into next year that there will continue to be impacts.
Great, thank you.
So I have our final prepared question, which is about the community development displacement mitigation effort. You talked to us last year about this extensively and how the, how Prosper Portland is involved in kind of combating gentrification and those, you know, negative effects of historic development. So could you talk to us a little bit about the status of the program now in the 2021 budget? And so how is the effort going? How has it changed with economic slowdown? And what's the funding source for it and how does that look in the 2021 budget?
Thank you. Those are great questions. Within Tax Increment Finance Districts along commercial corridors, we are continuing to coordinate closely with the Bureau of Transportation, the Portland Housing Bureau and Bureau of Planning and Sustainability on a shared approach. Our investments within TIF districts are focused on supporting commercial stabilization via grants to small businesses and affordable commercial space to help mitigate any displacement impacts. We're continuing to build out our ability to offer affordable commercial space at sites like Lentz Commons at 92nd and Foster, 116th and Halsey, 10th and Yamhill and the Joyce Hotel. In addition, in alignment with our community-based action plans and priorities, we are looking at potentially, potential increased foreclosure risks to property owners due to COVID-19. And we are also working to identify opportunities or financing that can help stabilize property owners and properties, including via property acquisition. We also have some revolving loan funds to use outside of TIF districts that can be used to help support in this anti-displacement effort. In the Southwest Corridor along the Barbara Boulevard Corridor, we are jointly participating in the city's intergovernmental agreement with TRIMET and partnership with Metro to help achieve objectives for commercial corridor development-related small business support, retention and job creation. In coordination of the city bureaus, together with community partners, we will create strategic objectives regarding any provision and delivery of future tax increment financing or otherwise funded projects that further community development and economic development outcomes. Any TIF district will be based on council discussions and actions during the coming fiscal year. Over the last 18 months, Prosper Portland staff have been working with a coalition of seven community-based organizations in the Cully neighborhood of Northeast Portland to explore a potential new tax increment finance district there. The coalition is concerned about residential and commercial gentrification pressures and is curious to explore what TIF would be an appropriate and effective tool to mitigate these pressures. Since the last TSCC hearing, staff has secured a grant from Metro to fund community engagement work in this area and Prosper Portland has committed resources to fund a coalition staffer in order for this effort to continue to move forward. It is expected that the coalition will decide whether to more formally pursue a TIF district, including various statutory steps and requirements at some point this summer or this fall. Thank you.
Thank you. And can you, and can you find me what the, the new TIF district is? I'm just trying to remember if I've been here when you created a new one.
So I think the, the commissioner, or sorry, the chair, I apologize, second time. The chair was talking about the potential new TIF district. We don't want to make any headlines on this one, just initial conversations that some of our Living Cully partners, a consortium of seven organizations, are discussing, beginning to have conversations with, within the Cully area. So it hasn't been created yet.
Oh, no, no, sorry. Right. I, I understood that. And I actually did have a question about that consideration. But before that, I was just trying to go historically. What is the most recent one that had been, that has been?
Sorry, so we created, I think the most recently created district, and Justin is on the call and can correct, but I believe that the most recently created district is the Education District, which was then, some portion of it was folded into the North McAdam TIF District in 2015. And so that doesn't exist anymore as a standalone district.
I see. Okay. Well, um, great. Thank you. I was just trying to remember if I had been on the commission when a new district was created, which it sounds like I was, but if, I don't know if you, Director Brennan, or some of the commissioners could weigh in on, you were saying that the, you know, Living Cully community partners there are, you know, exploring this. What considerations does Prosper Portland take into account when, as in your comments, Chair Cruz, you said, we're considering if TIF is the right mechanism to use in the Cully area? Like, what are the factors that go into that decision?
I can, I can share a little bit and then the commission can weigh in. And Justin just reminded me that we created the six Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative districts at the same time as we created the Education District. So those are slightly different, but those were also created in the same time period. So thanks to Justin for helping to update the record. So, you know, there, there are both strategic considerations and then there are technical considerations. And so I'm going to start with the technical considerations and then the strategic. On the technical side, as you know, there are acreage limitations. So only 15% of the city can be within a tax increment finance district or only 15% of the assessed value. And so we spend, you know, we're, we're monitoring what available acreage there is or what available assessed value there is. And so that's one consideration, just is there the acreage and where should it be best deployed? Where would it be best to, to use that acreage within a tax increment finance district? And so, so that's a key consideration. And then the other consideration is just a financial one. So how large would a TIF district have to be in order for it to make meaningful revenue to meet the needs of the community? And that's something that is done with a financial analysis and that's Tony's team that's looking and seeing whether it actually makes sense. And so when they say whether the, the tool makes sense, it's, is it enough resources? Is it the right kind of resources? As you know, these resources are restricted to investing in buildings and infrastructure improvement. So, you know, affordable housing and the like can be supported, but workforce development can't be. So I think that's as the Cully community is thinking about it. I think they're considering what signals this might send to the market that might go counter to the anti-gentrification approach that they're considering. But then also what would the value be of having concentrated resources to support affordable housing or long-term affordable commercial spaces? And so I think, I think those are the strategic conversations that are being had, held. And, you know, just thinking about the Neighborhood Prosperity Networks, that really was a community-led, community-driven process in terms of how those resources have been invested. This would certainly be a partnership, but we believe strongly that having the community decide, you know, if this is a partnership that they want to engage in is a very important step.
Thank you. I really appreciate you adding to that.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? Can you name some of the partners in that emerging coalition, Living Cully?
Well, I'm going to ask Justin to do it because I'm going to forget somebody. And then I might as well just actually go directly to the source. Justin? Oh, he's, he's PMing me. So, okay. All right. So Native American Youth and Family Habitat for Humanity, Verde, the Cully Association of Neighbors, R42nd, Cully Boulevard Alliance and more, but, but that's the, the center of it.
That's helpful. Thank you.
If I could just add and kind of piggyback onto what Executive Director Branum said. You know, Commissioner Myers and I joined, I think, right after those last TIF districts were established and, you know, but my impression has been that it's been a very much a community-driven process and that Cully neighborhood is a very active neighborhood. They seem very strategic. They've had good leadership over the years. They've also had good kind of local management there on the ground, you know, helping coordinate people's efforts with that. And they've testified before our commissioner a number of times and, you know, they're really an impressively well-organized group. So I think that's an example of one where the community will really drive a lot of this process.
Thank you.
Great. So that's the end of our, of our questions. And I want to thank you all for contributing to this discussion about your budget. That, that's helpful, very helpful. Craig, has anyone emailed you about comment, public comment?
I've had no contact. Have any of the technicians from, from Prosper Portland had any contact from citizens?
This is Pam.
Last hour. Yes.
Hi, this is Pam, the recording secretary. We've not received any, any request for testimony.
Okay, no citizen testimony, Chair.
Okay, with that, then I will close the formal hearing and open up a regular meeting of the TSCC. Does anyone, any commissioner have any comment on, on the budget? Okay, with that, I'll turn the floor over to the executive director to review the staff recommendations for the certification letter.
We've reviewed the budget thoroughly and we are recommending that you certify the budget without any objections or without any recommendations. They did a nice job on the budget this year.
Yes, that, that was obvious and sure. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion authorizing the commission to sign the certification letter as recommended by the staff?
I'll move. This is Margot Tenny.
Okay, may I have a second?
I'll second. This is James.
Okay, any discussion before we vote? Okay, with that, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Great, the motion carries and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for participating. Enjoy the rest of your afternoon.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Behringer.
Um, yeah, no, I don't, I don't have anything formal to report. I guess I just did want to mention that since we last met, I have participated in several family-friendly protests against the racial injustice and inequity that's going on around the world these, these past few weeks. And certainly been spending quite a bit of time introspecting and thinking about, you know, how I could do more to help facilitate change. Recognizing that, you know, as, as a human, as a parent, as a community member and a business owner, that I just need to be ever more intentional and take, take more actions that can have a meaningful and long-term impact. And just recognizing that these protests can't go on forever, but how critical it is that the sense of urgency stays ignited in all of us and really make some real change. And I think just in light of all of this, I'm just, I'm particularly proud these days to be involved with this organization and all of the great work that, that the staff is, is doing to address systemic racism and build an equitable economy. And I, I think that we're just, we have an incredible opportunity right now that with this moment upon us to really just harness all this energy and create some real change. And I'm, I'm, I'm excited about that. I guess there's either a real silver lining there in terms of just, just doing some really, really meaningful and impactful work here in coming days, weeks, months, years. So that's all. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Christian Moreland Capuia?
I have nothing to report. I have nothing to report.
Commissioner Platt? Yes, hi. So let's see, I'm going through my calendar from the last meeting. I had a check-in with the folks at Verde on Friday, the 15th of May regarding their new initiative to create a shared information platform called SUMA. It's an interesting project. Hopefully it will get some funding and move along. Wednesday, the 20th of May, I attended the BIPOC-led Resilient and Equitable Food Economy meeting to put together a, an application, which has since gone out to the USDA for a grant to fund the initial investigatory phase. So that's exciting. And that process, of course, is being led by Tori and his team. On, let's see. Sorry, I didn't pre, pre-prepare this. I'm just sort of living day by day these days. And I believe that is it. Yes, that, that summarizes it. So that's my report.
Okay, thank you. All right. And for my part, I have just continued to participate in the Mayor's Economic Recovery Task Force meetings. I have not been really very involved in the subcommittee efforts, but those efforts are continuing along quite well. And I would just commend the staff for all of your effort and leadership on that. It's a pretty heavy lift to coordinate all that. And so thank you for your great work on that committee and supporting that committee. And next up, we have Executive Director Branham's report.
Thank you, Chair Cruz and Commissioners. Good afternoon. I want to start off just by verbalizing something that we sent out, but wanted to begin my remarks because the last month since we've met has really been marked by work to support our community in light of COVID and more recently to support staff and community and each of us in light of murder of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor and reckoning with 400 years of systemic racism in our country. So just want to start by noting that Prosper Portland has been clear that we stand in solidarity with the Black Lives Matter movement and the eradication of white supremacy. We recognize that the emotional burden of this time is much more significant for our black staff and colleagues and the community partners and business owners, excuse me. And that we know that Prosper Portland's past racist actions with which have disproportionately impacted the African-American community in the name of urban renewal remains a stain on the history of our organization. We also believe that transformational change is possible. And so I think we've been holding a lot of dual feelings as an organization right now. And Prosper Portland has recommitted to working towards becoming an anti-racist organization and deploying strategies that achieve equitable outcomes for Black Indigenous and other communities of color. We are urging businesses and community organizations to meaningfully commit to an equity journey and want to note that you can find tools, actions, and key considerations as you design your path forward on culture change with the Culture Change Roadmap, a Portland Means Progress website, the Portland Means Progress website that was co-created with a number of equity practitioners and our own Court Morse and Myra Ariola. And it has a fantastic information. So you can check it out on that website. Or you can be part of the Portland Means Progress program and join a cohort of other businesses engaged in this work together. Also on our website, under the Black Lives Matter banner, you'll see a list of resources including information about local black vendors and entrepreneurs and educational materials and information. So would like to appreciate the Mercatus Collective and our Equity Council for helping to pull this information together. And to Commissioner Dr. Moreland Kapuya, whose comments were recently reported in USA Today and that frames our website. So we, we wanted to lift up those comments. Turning to our economic relief and recovery efforts now, I'll share that Prosper Portland has been collaborating with Multnomah County as the county works towards reopening, which is coming this Friday, June 12th, Phase One, pending state approval. One aspect of this work includes the creation of a webpage with reopening tips, links to resources, and a collection of digital and print assets that businesses can use to show customers what actions they're taking to reopen safely. The content created can be used on Facebook and other social media platforms, company websites, in addition to materials that can be printed and posted in physical locations. Certainly larger organizations that have in-house designers can do this themselves, but there are a number of smaller organizations that have communicated that this would be helpful. And the web content and all the digital and print materials will be available in English, Spanish, Vietnamese, Russian, and simplified Chinese as well. Staff is working on these materials and will have them finalized and available via our website before June 12th. So I want to acknowledge the tremendous work of Lisa Norwood and Myra Ariola, Jared Weiner, Tori Campbell, Anne Mangan, Court Morse, Andrea Gall, Charles Adrian, and many others who've looked at this material and will continue to refine it as we get input from our partners going forward. So speaking of the reopening, as was mentioned earlier, the city of Portland and Prosper Portland in partnership with local industry and culturally specific organizations are hosting a series of online listening sessions to learn how the city can support businesses as we look towards a phased reopening. Each session is open to the public and intended for businesses in a specific industry or community. To date, we've held five sessions, began with the Native American business owners, with Native American business owners, and then restaurants and retail business owners. And we've had sessions for Spanish language speakers and Russian language speakers. In addition to the business and industry-specific sessions, community stabilizations will focus on geographic-specific businesses and residents and community needs with equity as the foundation of those conversations. We began these sessions with a discussion focused in Old Town Chinatown in partnership with the Community Association there. For more information, if you want to participate or listen in, you can go to our website at prosperportland.us and search for listening sessions. Again, I want to acknowledge our county and state partners who are providing great information and partnership throughout as well as the Prosper Portland team. So Tori and Shay, Amy, Lisa, Catherine, Anne, Morgan, Carl, Bernie, and Lisa Abwaf as well. So finally, I just want to highlight two additional opportunities for businesses. The first is that yesterday, Tuesday, June 9th, we launched the Small Business Repair Program. This program will provide near-term support for small businesses and nonprofits whose spaces have been impacted over the last few months as they've been vacant and as a result of recent physical damages. We're using resources from tax increment financing and prioritizing businesses within the Northeast Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Central East Side, and Old Town Chinatown with priority for Black Indigenous and all people of color-owned businesses and community-serving nonprofits. The Small Business Repair Grant, which is not first come, first served, is available now and it will provide awards between $500 and $10,000. Unlike the PIP grant, there's no match requirements. And the expectation is that the investments would need to be made within the next six months. The initial application process closes this coming Sunday and applicants will be notified soon after. So again, I want to acknowledge that team, Amy Nagy, Lisa Abwaf, and Mangan, Lisa Norwood, Robert Smith, Court Morse, Sue Lewis, Nancy Wilson, Bernie Karoski, and many others for their work to get this program from concept to launch so quickly. And a reminder for our local clean tech businesses that today is the deadline to apply for Eco Capital Connections, which is a matchmaking event with Virtu Lab. This event will connect clean tech firms with active investors from the Pacific Northwest and Silicon Valley and global corporations. You can go to webuildgreencities.com for more information. Thank you.
That was a great report. Thank you so much. While I have an opportunity, I'd just like to kind of reiterate something that Commissioner Gambetti mentioned. And that was just the way that Prosper has handled equity work over the last few years. You know, I'm really proud of the work that we've done. You know, it's really hard work and it's been a necessity on behalf of the agency to do that work. But in light of everything that's happened recently, I think the value of that work has just been highlighted. And it feels really good to know that we've done all of that effort to this point. And I think it's reflected well on the agency. So I just want to thank everybody for continuing to work on that and doing a fabulous job way back when people did not have it as in as high a priority as they do now. So, thank you. So next up, we have meeting minutes for the May 13th, 2020 meeting. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting minutes are approved. Is there any public comment today? Chair Cruz, any emails or? What's that?
We have not received any public comment.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So now we have the consent agenda. We have two items on the agenda. One is authorizing a $75,000 grant to Greater Portland Inc. And then the second is authorizing a short-term inter-fund operating loan for the period of July 1, 2020 to July 30, 2021, in an amount not to exceed 1.9 million from specified funds to the following funds: the Community Development Block Grant, Economic Opportunity Initiative Fund, the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative Tax Increment Financing Fund, and the Community Opportunities and Enhancements Program Fund. Would someone like to make a motion to, well, first of all, is there any, does anybody want to have any discussion of those items? Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent, the two consent agenda items?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's pass them in, please. All right. So next up, we are to the regular agenda. And I'm working off the updated agenda that Justin sent around earlier. And so I'm hoping that this is still in the right order. And if for some reason there have been any lasting changes, please let me know. But I have as item number 11, authorizing an application to the United States Economic Development Administration for a $1.48 million grant. And Kay Little will present on that.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Commissioner or Executive Director Branham? Yes, this request is for approval of the application for the EDA grant application. The EDA has extended a grant or invitation to apply for a total of 1.35 million. And so we're asking you to authorize our submitting an application. Next slide, please, Justin. If we are awarded, the loans will lead to business stability and also job creation and retention. Next slide, please, Justin. As part of the CARES Act that was passed by Congress in late March, the EDA received a supplemental appropriation intended to prevent, prepare for, and respond to economic injury faced by communities and businesses as a result of the coronavirus. Excuse me. Early May, the EDA invited a select number of entities that had already lent EDA-provided funds to apply for a supplemental revolving loan fund award to help respond to the unusual and compelling urgency of the pandemic. And EDA had selected these RLO partners by virtue of their longstanding and substantial investment in making credit available to small businesses. And they did so because they felt like it was in the best public interest to make these awards to these organizations on a non-competitive basis. So Prosper Portland was one of those entities invited to apply for a single supplemental financial assistance grant, which has two components. The first one being the 1.35 million to capitalize a new revolving loan fund that would be used to alleviate sudden and severe economic dislocation caused by the virus. And two, up to an additional 10% that would be used to defray administrative costs necessary to establish the revolving loan fund and also that would facilitate rapid and prudent lending to respond to the pandemic. And then in addition to providing those funds, the EDA also provided additional flexibility to the recipients of the grants to ensure that this credit was provided quickly and efficiently to the community. Some of those regulations that they waived had to do with, one, the leverage requirement, which often means that the business owner has to provide a down payment. And they also waived the requirement that the business had to demonstrate that credit is not otherwise available. And so the waiving these requirements will make it easier to get financing to these businesses. Next slide, please, Justin. So if we receive the grant, the supplemental funds will be combined with the EDA funds we currently have on hand to provide funding to two targeted groups. That would be our traded sector companies that are best positioned to weather the downturn and create living wage jobs and also BIPOC and women-owned businesses. And these loans would provide much-needed working capital to businesses that they can use to pay for expenses such as back rent in utilities, to purchase inventory or personal protective equipment, meet payroll costs, set up or improve online sales or e-commerce infrastructure so they can pivot the business to address COVID, social distancing requirements, and other business stabilization and recovery needs. Next slide, please, Justin. Some highlights about the grants is that the EDA is requiring that the funds are loaned out or dispersed within a 24-month period from the time that they are awarded. The EDA is providing 100% of the funding and so they're not requiring a match from Prosper Portland. And also with this loan, they cannot be given with forgiveness as a feature. The EDA expects that these loans are made only to companies that are reasonably expected to be able to pay the funding back. Next slide, please. And so when we submit this application, the EDA is expected to announce their funding decision within 30 days of receiving the application. And so we expect that once we get that notice of award, that we would return to the Prosper Portland Board for grant acceptance and also for approval of some proposed loan terms that we would like to attach to the programming. And so we expect that we'll be back at the next board meeting for that. Next slide, please. Any questions?
Okay, I think you mentioned previously that it's not competitive. It's not a competitive application process, is that right? Like, what's the process in terms of getting approval? What would maybe stand in the way of success?
It's correct. It's a non-competitive grant. I don't think there really are any barriers since that we have already received revolving loan funds. They'll get the application. And I got the impression from talking to our EDA administrator in Seattle that the approvals will probably come pretty quickly. So I'm not anticipating that we'll get declined for the grants.
Hi, Kay. Just a quick question. On the portion or the caveat that folks can, who apply, there's not a loan forgiveness component. How many folks do you think that really desperately need the help might be able to benefit then? Because that's sort of, to me, I know it's not you, but that sort of defeats the purpose. So is there some plan that Prosper Portland has through the city to maybe add that element for this particular since there's no matching required?
Well, I know with the EDA funds that they will not allow forgiveness on the funds that they provide. That doesn't mean that we can't do such things as modifying those loans. So if a company, for example, is having a difficulty in repayment, that we could do some modification of that loan, like temporarily deferring payments, that is allowed. But we just can't forgive the proceeds. So we still have some flexibility in that situation to make sure it's not a burden to the businesses.
Any other comments?
Yeah, hi, this is Commissioner Platt. Hi, Kay. I am curious about any interest or preliminary interest we've had from companies that Prosper is already in contact with or specific industries that you think are most likely to apply and use these loans.
Well, I definitely think that there is a demand for this funding. I mean, when we put out the Small Business Relief Fund, we had over 3,000 businesses apply for that. So far, we've had 21 businesses that we were able to fund. We'll probably end up around 25 or so. So I think that there's definitely a need for financing. And I think especially since we're in an environment where a lot of banks are probably going to be very hesitant to provide financing. So I think that we have a real opportunity to provide funding both to companies owned by people of color and women, but also those traded sector companies that can create jobs but also need that funding. So I don't think that there'll be an issue with getting the money out the door as long as we're making sure that folks are made aware that we have that funding available.
And a follow-up question, I'm curious if we've, if we're allowed to, if we've considered attaching or encouraging, I guess you could say, any specific equity requirements or equity work, right, with these loans? So it's like, hey, we're providing those resources, but in addition, we also have these other resources, right, that can, you know, help you do that work in-house. So is that part of the picture this time?
Yes, we do have some equity features that we would like to include with that. And I would like to leave that as a cliffhanger when we come back to the board to explain what those are once we make sure that we get the award. once we make sure that we get the award.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Well, it's great, Kay. Thank you so much. That's really exciting. So we'll hope for the best. All right. Would someone like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 7377?
Motion moved.
Sorry.
You have a second?
Sorry.
I think Alicia has a follow-up question, maybe?
Alicia, are you, I think you're on mute.
At the same time. So I'm being second person. It doesn't matter. I just want it, I support it. That's all.
All right, great. Okay, then. So we've had a, we've had first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. unanimously. Thank you very much. Great. Okay, we'll move on to the next item. This is number 12. There are actually two resolutions accompanying this item. This authorizes the Executive Director to enter into a contract with O'Neill Walsh Community Builders LLC in an amount not to exceed 4.4 million for the construction of an interim retail post office facility in the ground floor of the existing parking structure located at 715 Northwest Hoyt Street, and authorizing the Executive Director to execute the Third Amendment to the lease agreement with the United States Postal Service for the interim retail post office facility. And Amy Edwards and Sarah Harple are presenting on this. Amy, Sarah, are you on?
Yeah, good afternoon. We are actually going to take this item as well as the following item in combination, Resolution 7380. We'll be presenting, we'll be co-presenting three resolutions for you.
Okay, sounds great. We'll vote on them, well, we'll vote on the first two because of the way the agenda is set up, and then the third.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Harple. I am the Project Manager for the Broadway Corridor project in the Development and Investment Department. Joining me today is Amy Edwards, our Asset and Investment Manager. We'll be presenting on two projects on behalf of a larger team who are available for any questions today as well. This includes Elise Hendrickson, who is our Project Manager for the Post Office Retail Relocation Project, Wendy Wilcox, who is our Project Manager for the Vehicle Maintenance Facility Demolition, and she also sees our Business and Workforce Equity Compliance for both projects. Colin Polk is our Environmental Services Coordinator. And then we are joined today by Mike Logan and Ryan McDonald of McDonald Excavating. They are the CMGC for the VMS demolition project, as well as Ally O'Neill from O'Neill Walsh, who is the CMGC for the Post Office Retail Relocation Project. And then finally Jeb Corner, who is the owner's representative for all onsite demolition work moving forward. As I mentioned, we're going to take these slightly out of order. Justin, go to the next slide, please. I'll be starting with Resolution Number 7380, seeking authorization of a contract with McDonald Excavating for the demolition of the vehicle maintenance facility, as well as hotspots remediation work in an amount not to exceed just over 1.3 million. Next slide. And then Amy Edwards will be presenting two Resolutions 73778 and 7379 pertaining to the construction of an interim relocation for the post office retail, as well as an amendment to a lease, to a lease with the post office to effect that move. Next slide. Before we get started, though, I would like to provide brief context of this work and its role and its significance in the broader Broadway Corridor redevelopment efforts. For those who are not familiar with the Broadway Corridor, today we are focusing on work within the 14-acre post office site, or former post office site, which is at the heart of the Broadway Corridor and which Prosper Portland acquired with the Portland Housing Bureau in 2016. Next slide. The vehicle maintenance facility sits on the northernmost boundary of the property. And then the post office retail functions are currently located on the southernmost portion of the main processing and distribution center. They will be moved into the southern portion of the immediately adjacent existing parking structure. The relocation of the post office retail is obviously a critical next step before demolition of the main processing and distribution center can take place. Next slide. These two projects are also critical to moving forward with additional site preparation work, including the extension of Northwest Kearney and Northwest Johnson through the site, as well as the creation of development paths for first phases of development. We anticipate this will start with two of the parcels shown in gray, which will be led by Continuum Partners, as well as the northern half of parcel four shown here, which will be led by the Portland Housing Bureau. Next slide, please. This shows the context of these two projects within the larger project schedule and highlights the importance and critical path nature of the post office retail relocation to that future demolition and future redevelopment work. Next slide, please. Also note that the approval of investment today in the retail relocation, as well as the vehicle maintenance facility demolition as part of our larger acquisition and site prep investment, is anticipated to leverage approximately $1 billion in private development anticipated to occur over the next 15 years or so. We have had previous authorizations, obviously, of the acquisition of $88 million between Prosper and the Portland Housing Bureau, authorization of our owner's representative contract, and then today, the two actions before you. That leaves about $32 million in our forecasted budget for the remaining demolition of the existing building, of the main processing building, the existing garage, and a future final relocation of the post office retail function. Next slide, please. This redevelopment also represents the potential for about 4 million square feet or about 10% of the growth that's forecasted to occur within the central city between now and 2035. We do not yet have developed programs for those individual projects, but we forecast somewhere between 4,000 and 8,000 jobs and 1,800 to 2,400 new households being able to be accommodated on the site as a result of this investment. Next slide, please. And importantly, I do want to note that these two projects also further the guiding principles that were established by the Broadway Corridor Steering Committee, and in particular, meeting and exceeding Prosper Portland's business and workforce equity goals, and ensuring that the investment in this site continues to have economic benefit to a broader range of Portlanders, as this was established as a critical element in our steering committee conversations. Next slide, please. To focus then specifically on Resolution 7380 before you today regarding the VMS demolition. Next slide. The team working on the vehicle maintenance facility project includes McDonald Excavating, a certified minority enterprise business, who is selected as the construction manager, general contractor for the demolition of the vehicle maintenance facility via competitive request for proposals process. They have been providing pre-construction services on the project, and we are now seeking to approve their guarantee maximum price for the actual demolition and soils remediation work. They're proposing to subcontract with a professional minority group, also an MBE certified firm for the hazardous materials abatement work, and then with state construction, the demolition work. Under separate contracts, the project has also benefited from the expertise of Amerio Design, an MBE firm, as well as STAN Tech and PBS Engineering and Environmental in the preparation of the project plans and specs. And they will continue to also provide oversight and engagement through the onsite work. Next slide, please. The scope of work in the current, the proposed CMGC contract includes the abatement and demolition of the vehicle maintenance facility. It's just a square foot concrete building, primarily one story with, as you can see, a small component of offices on a second floor. The scope of work also includes remediation and contaminated soil removal directly in front of the vehicle maintenance facility with the forward fueling station, as well as removal of a decommissioned underground storage tank. And it also includes soils remediation of hotspot soils that reach a higher threshold in the northwest corner of the site, which is just to the left of the building in this photo here. This is the location of a former manufactured gas plant that was used for the former railroad operations within the site. Next slide. Work is anticipated to commence in early July and then be completed by early October. It will start, obviously, with the hazardous building materials abatement, and then the demolition, and then finally the soils remediation and tank removal, and then backfill and securing the site. McDonald Engineering has identified a guarantee maximum price of just over $1 million. This includes a $100,000 contractor-controlled contingency for unforeseen conditions. And then staff is also proposing an additional $300,000 owner-controlled contingency for owner-directed changes in the scope of work. An example of this would be if there's a need to remediate additional hotspot soils beyond what was currently negotiated in the contract. So today, we are seeking a total contract authority not to exceed $1,336,847. I would also note that up to $500,000 of this work is eligible for eligible expenses for reimbursement associated with the hazardous building materials abatement, as well as some of the soils, hotspot soils remediation from an EPA brownfields grant that we recently received. I'm happy to pause for questions pertaining to the overall context or this project, or we can hand it off to Amy to discuss the retail relocation.
Have any questions or comments? I guess, I guess I just have one comment. And that is, I'm sure that we'll see this matter again in the next few months, you know, one way or another. But it would be great if we could kind of hear an update as to how this process is going, you know, later in the fall, maybe. You know, you never know with environmental issues and excavation issues. And it'd just be great to kind of hear how things are going at some point. Thank you.
Next slide, please. One more, please. Good afternoon, everybody. Executive Director Branham, Chair Cruz and Commissioners. These next few slides pertain to the other two resolutions that were mentioned. The authorization to enter into the CMGC contract with O'Neill Walsh Community Builders and to execute the Third Amendment to the lease agreement with USPS. This slide before you is representative of the agreement contained in the 2016 Purchase and Sale Agreement with USPS. As you know, Prosper Portland is obliged to maintain or create a permanent post office retail facility within the specifications that are shown on this slide. And there is an original lease agreement with USPS that was born out of that PSA. Today, we're coming to you with the Third Amendment to that lease, which is the culmination of negotiations with USPS to move into an interim facility so that the main building can be demolished and the progress on Broadway Corridor development can continue at pace. We have come to the agreement after the search with JLL that the interim facility should be located in the parking garage, which you see in the lower-left corner of the building, of the sketch rather. It will be constructed in an L shape along Hoyt and adjacent to the main building, which will be demolished. The Third Amendment to the lease agreement codifies USPS's agreement to the construction documentation, as well as laying out the details associated with the logistics, conditions, moving, and project closeout. As you know, this was facilitated through a letter of intent executed by USPS and Prosper Portland back in August. And that also led to the board action to enter into a design contract with GBD Architects and Cornerstone Architects in order to develop the plans to construct this facility. Next slide, please. This slide represents the retail team. We are fortunate to have O'Neill Walsh Community Builders on our team as a result of their request for proposal for the CMGC, which was issued in September of 2019. We've received four proposals that selected O'Neill Walsh Certified MBE in October of 2019. O'Neill Walsh Community Builders is a joint venture between Walsh Construction and O'Neill Construction Group. O'Neill Walsh Community Builders has projected to exceed our 20% BWE goals by reaching approximately 40% subcontractor utilization on this project. You see those subcontractors listed on this slide. As well, on this slide, you see that our design team is also subcontracting and is on track to meet our utilization goals as well. Next slide, please. With board authorization to enter into the CMGC, we anticipate executing the contract within the next several weeks. And construction will begin the week of July 6th and will project completion in January of 2021. We have conducted several rounds of bidding and iterative planning with O'Neill Walsh and our design team. We are still waiting for certain information from some contractors, but with this last bid estimate, we're at approximately $4 million of hard construction costs. We've built in a 10% owner's contingency for a maximum of 4.4 million. We've built that contingency in to cover as-yet unknown factors, including environmental, garage conditions, USPS materials availability, and risks associated with the ongoing pandemic. Next slide, please. We'll take questions if you have questions associated with those last two.
Are there any questions or comments? All right. Well, hearing nothing, I would just say it's exciting to see this progressing along. So thanks for your great work, and it's super to see these things come together. So it's great. So if there aren't any comments, I'll go ahead and call for a motion to approve. I think because of the way the agenda is set up, we'll do the first two resolutions and then the second, you know, the third resolution after that. So would someone like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 7378 and Resolution Number 7379?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
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 Second? Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Okay. It passed unanimously. And then I'd like to also call for a motion to approve Resolution Number 7380. If someone would like to do that.
So moved.
Thank you. Do you have seconds?
Second.
Second, Willie? Thank you. Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. That passes unanimously as well. Thank you very much. Good work. Okay, so are we ready for the budget items now? Yeah, okay. All right. So first up is action item number nine, adopting a budget amendment number five for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019 and ending July 30, 2020, and making appropriations. And then Tony Barnes will present on that.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Executive Director Branham, Tony Barnes, Finance Manager of Prosper Portland. I'll be presenting the fiscal year 2019-20 revised budget number five. It's Resolution 7375. Next slide, please. This is the fifth budget amendment that formally revises the fiscal year budget for fiscal year 1920. There's two main actions in this budget amendment. The number of items are significantly lower than our fall or spring budget amendment. Specific focus is around transfer of resources from contingency to administration in four districts, TIF districts, for a total of $11,000 to cover district-specific debt management expenses. We have an annual contract with the Office of Finance Management and Finance of the City of Portland to manage TIF-related debt and forecasting activity and refinancing activity. Specific impact to North Macadam and several other districts was a little bit higher this fiscal year, requiring a few extra resources to accomplish those tasks. requiring a few extra resources to accomplish those tasks. So that's included in the $11,000 total. The second item reappropriates $7.8 million in property redevelopment resources in the downtown waterfront TIF district specifically related to the acquisition of block 24. Those resources were previously transferred from fiscal year 1920 to fiscal year 2021 during the proposed budget in the REV5, sorry REV4 budget revision. We're transferring those dollars back to this fiscal year to ensure there's adequate appropriation in the event that the acquisition closes on June 30th, the last day of the fiscal year, so that appropriations in downtown waterfront are not exceeded by fiscal year end. If the transaction does get recorded in fiscal year 2021, there's already sufficient appropriation for next fiscal year as well. So it'll be covered whether it's closing in this fiscal year or next fiscal year. Those are the transactions identified or recommended adjustments identified in exhibit A. Next slide, please. In total, since we brought the revised four budget to you in May, the net change in expenditures is $7.8 million. Changing total expenditures for the fiscal year to $183.7 million and reducing contingency primarily in the downtown waterfront to fund by $7.8 million with total requirements of $419.5 million. Next slide, please. That's covers the requested adjustments. I'd be happy to take any questions on the budget revision.
Are there any questions on the budget revision and adjustments? Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve resolution number 7375?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor, you could say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, unanimously. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have item 10, which is also an action item, adopting the annual budget across the Portland for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 and ending July 30, 2021, making appropriations. And Tony Barnes will also present on this item. Thank you.
Good afternoon again. This is resolution 7376, adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget. Now, since the Tax Supervising Conservation Commission has formally held a hearing and certified the 2021 approved budget, the adopted budget is being presented to you for formal action. And I'd like to present several recommended changes as part of that adoption. Next slide, please. Before I go into the specific adjustments, this recap, on May 20th, City Council took action to approve the fiscal year budget. With that approval, there was a reduction of economic development resources related to the cannabis tax allocation as well as an increase in general fund resources for one-time film and video resources. The recommendations included in this adoption include decreased administration for $49,717 to match the agreement with the union, Local 75. The agreement was to reduce total operating expenditures by $1.2 million between the requested budget and the updated budget for this fiscal year. The final technical adjustment to match that agreement is the $49,717 for a combination of personnel services and materials and services. So that's represented in our administrative category. The other recommendation is to remove the $7.8 million in property redevelopment in the downtown waterfront TIF district. This is related to the adjustment just presented with the fifth budget amendment for block 24. So we're decreasing, beginning fund balance in downtown waterfront, anticipating that will get spent on June 30th and therefore decrease resources and not be available for next fiscal year. However, we still have additional appropriation available in the event that it does end up closing next fiscal year. And then there's a final adjustment of $100,000 for economic development in Enterprise Own Fund to maintain the Neighborhood Prosperity Network program to support ongoing business technical assistance next fiscal year. This was previously funded with one-time resources in the current fiscal year, so that work will continue through Enterprise Own funding. Next slide, please. And to recap, I think I mentioned this at the beginning of the presentation. City Council did during approval of the budget add 50% funding for the film and video office. That was $72,000. They removed cannabis funding that was originally in the mayor's proposed budget for small business relief fund. This was reallocated to the office, Civic and Community Life. We had also recommended edits for the housing set aside. That was part of the city's budget approval true up to what the city council, I'm sorry, City of Portland Housing Bureau was including in the City of Portland budget. The, at this time, the city is considering, making considerations to change the budget at the City of Portland, which potentially could impact the appropriations for general fund for Prosper Portland. We don't have those edits if there are any edits at this point. And we will be making recommendations as part of most likely a first budget revision in July or after July, after the beginning of the fiscal year to consider how we true up to that, if there are any further recommendations as part of the city's budget adoption that is occurring right now and into tomorrow. So we won't have those changes for this specific action today, but we'll need to follow up on what those are. Next slide, please. So in total, for next fiscal year, beginning fund balance in the downtown waterfront district and several other TIF districts are reduced to a total of $7.8 million. We are recognizing intergovernmental agreement with, I believe, the Bureau of Planning related to Southwest Corridor work. We have an agreement to do work with triment in the Bureau of Planning that will amount to about $60,000. So we're including that resource as part of this group of recommended adjustments. So in total, total revenues for next year are about $120 million and total resources $340 million when including the beginning fund balance adjustments. Next slide, please. And for total appropriations being recommended from the changes from approved to adopted, there's the reduction of $49,717 for administration, $100,000 in economic development and $7.8 million reduction for block 24 and property redevelopment. Net change to contingency is about just over $1,000 or total expenditures of $200 million and requirements, including contingency of $340 million. And next slide, please. And at this point, I would be happy to take any questions on the recommended changes.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, Commissioner Platt. So the, you know, the testimony that we provided earlier for the Tax Commission included note of the cannabis funds being available for small business use. Looks like the recommendations now from City Council are to remove those completely. Is that right? Just to not even factor them in or just a reduction?
It's a, thank you, Commissioner. It's a reduction in one-time resources. There are ongoing resources of over $300,000 that continue in the budget to support the inclusive business resource network. The reduction was related to one-time cannabis funds that was specifically included in the mayor's budget for the, specifically this small business relief fund was really removed.
Do we, do we have an I? What was the justification for that or they needed it elsewhere? That was, you know, another, another support and another portion of the city budget?
So it was reallocated to the office of Civic Life to continue their social grant program.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? All right. Tony, do you think we will have to revisit the budget again later in the fall? Depending on how revenues go, will there be, is there a likelihood of that, do you think?
Yes, we'll be looking at the budget over the summer pretty closely as far as program income, district by district, budget versus actuals on how our loan and property income are performing according to budget as well as the ongoing discussion with the city on the city general fund forecast and seeing what direction that's headed. So right now, we're planning for a fall budget amendment as we usually schedule it in October or November to line up with the city's fall bump process, monitoring process. If there is higher changes, greater changes sooner, well, we might have to bring something sooner in between July and October. But right now, we feel we have a pretty conservative estimate for program income and we're set with that, but we'll provide updates.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then. Thank you, Tony. That's great. Would someone like to make a motion to approve resolution number 736, excuse me, 7376, adopting our budget for next year?
So moved.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thanks to both of you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thanks for your good work, Tony. It's a big project.
Thank you.
Especially big this year, so.
Thank you very much and appreciate all your support leadership throughout the process.
Commissioner Cruz, I'm sorry, Chair Cruz, apologies. Can I just pile onto that appreciation? I, we have never had five budget adjustments in a given year, at least not in the 12 years that I've been aware of this or engaged in this organization. And we've never, at the same time, also had such a precipitous decline in program income and the need to forecast and the need to completely retool our programs to think about how we're supporting economic recovery. So I just, I can't emphasize enough how appreciative we are for Tony's leadership, for the extraordinary work of his team, both Francis and Courtney, who guided throughout the process, for Adam's leadership and also for all the program staff who took a look, you know, at what we anticipated for return of resources for how we could retool our program. So just hearty thank you, particularly. It's a big lift every year, but we see it this year in particular. So thank you.
If I could, could I add a few more appreciations to Justin Douglas and the whole governance, learning and outcomes team for supporting the citizen budget committee and metrics development and updating Sean Ullman, the whole communications team for presentation and web communications. As Kimberly mentioned, the program staff were led by Tori Campbell and Lisa Abwaf and real collaborative but here. And of course, as Kimberly mentioned, the Francis, Thurman and Courtney Kohn and Adam Lane for their support, developing the budget and forecasts and everything that comes with it.
That's great. Quite a team effort. So thanks to everybody. Fantastic. So now we come to our last item for the day. And this is a very special item, another action item. This is a commendation and appreciation of Dr. Alicia Moreland Kapuya for distinguished service and outstanding dedication to Prosper Portland and the city of Portland. As everybody knows, I'm sure, Dr. Moreland Kapuya is going to be leaving us to our own devices here and we're really going to miss her. And so I think what I'll do is I'd like to say a few things and then I'll just open it up to the other commissioners to say a few things. And then we'll have some special guests also make a few comments. So just on a personal note, I just want to say what a pleasure it has been to work with her over the last few years. She brings a really unique skillset and perspective to her board work. And, you know, I would never have dreamed how valuable that has been or could be. And it really has added a tremendous amount to everything we've done as a board over the last three or four years. Dr. Moreland Kapuya is a great advocate for the community. I'm always struck by her empathy and her ability to listen to folks in the community and hear what they're trying to say and to work with them. But she also stands her ground and she can be very forceful in her comments. And I really appreciate that a lot, too. You know, we need both things and Dr. Moreland Kapuya is just a tremendous on our board. So that brings to mind another thing, which is that I hope that she's going to come back. And Dr. Moreland Kapuya, when you come back, I really hope that you'll consider more community service. We love having you on our board and we would just love it if you would come back and bless our community with more engagement when you return. Maybe we could talk you into being on the board again or maybe something even more important. So, so thank you very much. Would the other commissioners like to say a few words?
I'd like to thank you, Dr. Moreland Kapuya, for your service. Thank you for your friendship. While we've served together, it's been my privilege and honor to serve next to you. Your breadth and depth of knowledge of the issues and where you don't know, you find out. And, you know, I think it's your skillset's going to be sorely missed on this council. So, thank you.
I'll follow up with that with a huge thanks to you for your incredible leadership. I've learned a ton from you over the last couple of years. I just think you always bring such a thoughtful and well-informed perspective to everything that we're doing. Your experience in trauma-based care, psychiatry, global economic development, the foundation that your family founded and who knows what else you do. It's, I'm constantly shocked and amazed by just the breadth of your, of your experience. And I just, I always, always look forward to hearing your comments on the issues that come before us. And I think I always find myself thinking, if not actually saying, yeah, yeah, what she said. And I try not to follow you in comments because it's following behind in your footsteps is not, is not the way to go. But I've really, really appreciated having the opportunity to serve alongside you and get to know you. Good luck to you.
Hi, Dr. Moreland Kapuya. I second everything that's been said already. And I want to add specifically that what I've, what I've admired most about your, your service on the commission has been the way that you understand and handle complexity. I think there is a lot of human as well as cultural and sociological complexity and all the matters that we have to attend to that are priorities as, as a, as a community and also as a commission. And I think the way that you have modeled that for us is something that will stick with me for a long, long time. Again, I appreciate that and thank you for your service. It's been an honor.
I don't know if this is the time for me to speak up, but I'm going to. And I, and I had some stuff written down, but I decided not to say what I had written down because I've known Dr. Moreland Kapuya for many, many years since high school. because I've known Dr. Moreland Kapuya for many, many years since high school. Her sister, my sister, my twin sister and her were on the Rose Festival together when Dr. Moreland Kapuya was queen out of Jefferson High School. And every time I'm around her, it's like when you have your star player, when she's not there, but she's on the team, you're like, ah, it's gonna be a long day. But when she's there, you're like, okay, we're about to get some stuff done. So as someone from the city, someone who's from North Portland, I'm really gonna miss you. You and your family, Daniel, you know, I've known your husband the same amount of time. And I don't know if we're understanding how much of a loss this is for our community. There's very few of us who've come from North Portland, who lived there in the eighties, in the nineties, now, who understand the depth of what Dr. Moreland Kapuya was bringing to the table. And I don't think there's any way to quantify the value in that. So, from me, from my family, you know my family, and all of us who have watched you, thank you. We, we love you. And, you know, it's for all those who came before, for our grandmothers who couldn't see us, for our aunts who can't see us. For all of those who said, when you get in there, you kick the door, and you absolutely, absolutely kick the techno prisoners, you've done that. I appreciate you. Much love. I'll miss you. Thank you. And that's from the mayor. The mayor says thanks. I say all the rest. The mayor says thanks.
Thank you all so much. Thank you, Cupid.
Thank you. Thank you, Cupid. That was great. I think we have another guest, Thalia Martinez.
Yes, Dr. Moreland Kapuya. I get a chance to say hi, and a couple of things, and if you allow me some space to share. So, big thank you to everything that you have done for this organization, for all of the staff that are involved. You are a stellar role model, and it's been a big privilege to be able to witness you work and to hear you speak and to learn from all of the things that you put forward as a challenge to us to remind us that our practice is extremely important and that what we do is we have an opportunity to help each other, to help effect real change. I had the capacity to create some community engagement guidelines that were completely modeled after your masterclass of trauma-informed care. I mean, honestly, what a privilege and an honor it really has been to hear you speak on it. And I think we all know now that we, you know, we need to focus, we need to prioritize each other, our safety, our well-being above all else. And we really do hope that, you know, that everything that you've laid in front of us, everything that you've shared, we're going to use. And that we really do hope that you do come back, even if it's through a teleconference call, a learning opportunity, anything. We have so much more to learn from you. And I'm just so appreciative of you, and I'm so grateful to have been in the same space and have heard you speak and share your work. So, thank you so much, Dr. Moreland Kapuya. I will miss you.
That's great. Thank you so much. And thanks to everybody for all those comments. And I have something else to share. We actually have a walk-on.
I think we have one more invited guest, and then I would love to say something. I think Dr. Holt is here.
Oh, great. Okay. All right. Please, go ahead.
And.
And Bryson Davis.
Yeah, thanks.
Great. Bryson, you want to go ahead, and then I'll go after you?
Sure. So, I just want to say it's been, it's been wonderful to work with you on the Project Working Group. I don't think I've seen somebody who has been able to combine a personal passion, personal dedication to a project and a community like you with the ability to make everybody else around you better at what they're doing and more focused and taking people to task for not being prepared. But, yeah, I really, I really appreciate working with you. I think it's been, I think it's been great. And you've been, you know, even being the chair, I feel like a lot of times you're you're the voice of the project and the spirit of the project. And so, it's been wonderful having you on.
Dr. Kapuya, it has been a delight to have you in the space. And your voice and your influence is so weighty, weighty in the sense that it anchors and connects. You've been bold and courageous to deal with the issues that others have, you know, tried to, they swallow their voice around. Never you. You're going to speak, you're gonna speak up, you're gonna speak well, you're gonna articulate what needs to be articulated. I want you to know how much I appreciate your influence. I appreciate your leadership. I appreciate the dignity by which you carried yourself. I appreciate the fact that when it's got hot, and it has gotten hot, that you've been able within the heat. I apologize, my phone has been blowing up all day. You have been, you were able to address what needs to be addressed with grace, with wisdom, with clarity, and with courage. And that's, those are rare qualities and so necessary. I think that you model and exemplify dignity, you model and exemplify leadership, you model and you exemplify compassion. So I want to thank you for being authentic, for being true, for being committed to the work. I'm excited to see what you will continue to do and how the city and community will be better because of you. And I would say you make things better, and that's an awesome, awesome quality. I had to jump off a Zoom to jump into this Zoom, because it was too important to not be able to weigh in. And it looks like I might have to leave again, but I wanted to at least say something, so, I appreciate you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Holt, just in case you have to leave. I was gonna wait to the end to respond, but in case you have to leave, thank you.
Chair Cruz is.
That's great.
I am okay to go? Okay. So, so I want to echo so much of what's been said and just speak to what an honor it's been to work for you. It's really a privilege to be able to work for someone who you so genuinely admire. And when I woke up this morning and was thinking in this bittersweet way about the fact that this was our last board meeting together, the word that kept popping up for me was brilliant in every sense of the word. And so I just want to appreciate your leadership and your guidance and your wisdom and how genuinely you engage and the brilliance that you show, both intellectually, you keep us all on our toes. You're exceptionally smart and insightful, but also just this bright light that I think comes from you and helps make the world clearer for many of us. The work that you shared with us around a trauma-informed approach continues to have lasting impact, and it really shone a light for many of us within the agency. I think your energy is contagious. I think you light up the room, you share your wisdom and your clarity. And there's this quote that I love, which is that at times, your own light goes out and is rekindled by a spark from another person. And each of us has cause to think with deep gratitude for those who have lighted the flame with that in us. And I just personally have done that for me many times at moments of fatigue. And I know that you've done that for the organization. Your impact will be felt for a long time. And finally, I just want to say my appreciation to you for the way that you show up holistically as a working parent. It means a lot to model it in the way that you do, so thank you for that. And I know it's a big transition for you and your family to be moving, so thank you to, you know, to them as well for sharing you with us. And we wish you the best and to you and your family. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional comments? If not, I have something else to share, and that is, we have a walk-on resolution, an official resolution of Prosper Portland with respect to Dr. Alicia Moreland Kapuya. And I have the honor of reading this to all of you. So, this is Resolution Number seven three eight one. Resolution of commendation and appreciation of Dr. Alicia Moreland Kapuya for distinguished service and outstanding dedication to Prosper Portland and the city of Portland. Whereas, Dr. Alicia Moreland Kapuya was appointed as a member of the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners, the Board, by Mayor Charlie Hales and confirmed by the Portland City Council on June first, 2016. Whereas, Dr. Alicia Moreland Kapuya was reappointed as a member of the Prosper Portland Board by Mayor Ted Wheeler and confirmed by the Portland City Council on June nineteen, twenty nineteen. Whereas, Dr. Alicia Moreland Kapuya has generously shared her professional skills as a physician in psychiatry to guide Prosper Portland through the development of a trauma-informed approach to community engagement that informs the agency's equity framework, training, and journey to become a multicultural, anti-racist organization. Whereas, Dr. Alicia Moreland Kapuya has served with honor and distinction on behalf of Prosper Portland on the Williams and Russell Project Working Group and championed this community-led project in partnership with Legacy Health and the city of Portland to benefit, support, and honor Portland's African-American community. Whereas, Dr. Alicia Moreland Kapuya played a leadership role in the implementation of the North Northeast Community Development Initiative with the goal of fostering economic prosperity among African-Americans and people of color. Whereas, Dr. Alicia Moreland Kapuya provided important guidance and strategic advice in the drafting and adoption of the ten-year Financial Sustainability Plan and regularly impresses upon staff that need to consider how prudent financial decisions can ensure the agency is able to continue to deliver on community priorities. Whereas, Dr. Alicia Moreland Kapuya provided leadership in the agency's name change and transition, stressing the importance of building trust in living into the vision of Prosper Portland. Whereas, Dr. Alicia Moreland Kapuya has served with honor and distinction as a visionary and advisor of the Broadway Quarter, supporting robust public engagement and a thoughtful approach to balancing multiple needs on an urban development project rooted in putting people first, which will dramatically change Portland's downtown landscape. Whereas, Dr. Alicia Moreland Kapuya has been the only Portland Rose Festival queen to serve as a Prosper Portland commissioner. Whereas, Dr. Alicia Moreland Kapuya volunteered significant time away from her family and her practice to ensure Prosper Portland's mission and vision for the city would be achieved. Whereas, Dr. Alicia Moreland Kapuya has deployed her deep roots in Portland and her steadfast commitment to serve the community in her able representation of the city of Portland as a commissioner of Prosper Portland. And whereas, Dr. Alicia Moreland Kapuya has diligently and forthrightly carried out her civic duties on behalf of Prosper Portland in the best interest of the city. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Prosper Portland individually and collectively commends Dr. Alicia Moreland Kapuya for her service to Prosper Portland and to the constituency of the city of Portland that Prosper Portland represents. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption. All true and fantastic. So, now, with all that in mind, would someone like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number seven three eight one?
I gladly make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Can we add like another fifty wherethes, though?
Was that a second?
That's a second.
I thought so. Thank you. All right, all those in favor? All right, a special resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Moreland Kapuya, for everything you've done for us. We are incredibly grateful.
You, may I say a few words?
Please do.
Well, I, thank you so very much. I wasn't planning on shedding any tears today. I think the last time I cried in public, someone asked me, do you really cry? I'm like, actually, yes, quite a bit. I'm like, who's cutting those onions? But I am incredibly appreciative to each and every one of you. Commissioner Myers, I really appreciate your friendship, your guidance. I know that I could always reach over and whisper in your ear something. And if I can't say it, I know you'd say it. And I just really have appreciated the friendship that we have developed. I'm super excited about all the cool things that I know you'll continue to do on the commission, so, so thank you. To Commissioner Gambetti, I just, I have always felt, you said to me that you don't like to go after me, because you're like, but she said. Oftentimes, I find myself saying, yeah, like she said. So I think that it definitely has been a wonderful opportunity to learn from you, to really appreciate the various perspectives and lenses in which you apply to the work and the level of thoughtfulness. So, thank you so very much for who you are, what you bring, and just the opportunity to be with you in this process. And to Commissioner Platt, I always appreciate how you make us pause for the cause and actively drill deeper in moments even when we're like, do we have to today? But it's always important, and it always renders a really good result. So I just want to say thank you for always just leading and causing us to pause for really important moments and to think critically. It's very much appreciated, and I have appreciated and enjoyed getting to know you and your family. And every time I have visited Andina, the food has been delightful. So, my wish and hope for you is that, is that as things pick back up, that you continue to serve and bring the great delicious cuisine and community. I think I met your mother there as well, and she was so sweet. And I think the only reason I keep going back is because your mom was there. So, there's something about mothers. And then, and of course, Chair and Commissioner Cruz, it has definitely been equally an honor to work with you. I know that we have had, I just appreciate your wisdom and your calm and the opportunities that we've had to have conversations over the phone, and I appreciate how you listen. And I just recently posted something about listening being similar to being loved and not inappropriately, but I'm just saying, when folks go listen to, they feel loved. And I think that there's opportunity for all of us to learn how to do that better, to listen as a form of love. And so, thank you for that. And then, of course, Kimberly, it has been an absolute pleasure and honor to learn from you, to watch you rise to the occasion, to literally take the organization. It was at a critical tipping point at the time that I met you. And coming in and really having to acknowledge a lot of really hard things, but also to figure out ways to navigate it and to bring people together. And again, that listening as a form of love, and I really do believe it's your listening and your tremendous love that has like covered a multitude of what could have been disasters. And I am confident in the agency's ability to move forward, to sustain over time, and to continue to build the bridges that are gonna be necessary to continue to buoy our community. And that is because of your leadership, because of your humility, because of your strength, because of your wisdom, because of your kindness, and kindness is one of those things that I think we can't get enough of these days. And because of your willingness, again, to partner and to open up and to have bidirectional exchange, or your willingness to admit when you don't know and be open to learn, I'm just so incredibly excited for you and grateful. And I didn't work, you never worked for me. I was always proud to work with you. So, thank you, Kimberly, and the best of luck to you. Cupid, you almost had me crying ugly tears today. You almost had me doing the ugly cry. Now, you know, you know you can't do that to me, right? But, but again, just to Mayor Wheeler, of which I send my condolences to him and his family at this really tough time. Thank you to him, and please send that. But also, thank you to you, Cupid, because every single meeting, every single night, when we're giving up so much time, you showed up. Even when you were tired, even when the day was hard, even when community sometimes didn't support and weren't the kindest, you still showed up with enthusiasm, with excitement, with a lot of knowledge. And in many ways, have been and continue to be a calming presence. And your leadership is, it's quiet, it's strong, it's powerful, it's consistent. And I'm appreciative of you and the things that I have learned. And I'm so, you know, I have no doubt, you know, when I do come back, probably, you know, I'm retiring in Africa. But when I do come back, we're going to Angola. Bye, y'all. Especially depending on this next election, but I'll keep it, we keep it. Especially depending on this next election, but, but I'll keep it, let me keep it. But I, I suspect that great things are on the horizon for you, and I know when I come back, you'll be in some leadership role in City Hall, likely mayor, or, or even governor. That's how impressed I am with your ability to lead and how thoughtful you have been in all of the spaces that you've occupied. So, thank you, Cupid. Love to you and to your family. Much appreciated. Thalia, and to all of the Prosper Portland staff, and I want to call everybody out by name, and I know we don't have, you know, a, a long time, but I, it's, I'm, I'm appreciative of Justin, of Pam, of Adam, of Kay, of Amy, of Tony, of Lisa, of, of, and Thalia, you are incredible, because I know you're a parent and you've got a little one. And the way you show up and the way that you just bring such clarity. We said we needed maps. You had the maps the next week, and it was like, "Okay, no excuses here. Let's, let's get going." You know, you just, you, you work, you do the job, you do it with such grace and poise. And it has been an honor to know you as well, and I, whatever I can do, I hope to stay connected with all of you. I'm not leaving. I'm building a bridge, and I hope all of you are, are happy and feel, you know, willing to cross. This is home for me, and, and I don't want to miss Sean, both Sean Murray, Sean, and Tori, everybody, Kim Moreland. I don't want to leave out any names, but the Prosper Portland staff and, and faculty are incredible. You have been most gracious and wonderful, and I, we, we have to continue to support the work of Prosper Portland. And just thank you. Thank you so very much. And then to, to the good Reverend Pastor, Dr. Stephen Hope. You know, I thought about you yesterday, and I'm, I haven't forgotten about Bryson either, because I see you, and I'm, I see you, and I want to thank you as well. So, the good, to the good doctor, I thought about you yesterday when Reverend Al, I'm not gonna loo, you, Sharpton, because he just revealed to us that that was a slave name, and he would prefer not to have to have referred to, I'm Reverend Al. As he was referring to George Floyd in his eulogy, he said, "And I thought of you," because you're always so thoughtful in, in your preaching and teaching, said that "God took a, a rejected stone and made him the cornerstone of an entire movement." And there is nothing rejected about you, good doctor, but you have been the cornerstone of many great, wonderful things in this community. And, and, and housing is one of them, many things. I just want to say thank you, because you two have been consistent in your show up, consistent in the work and endeavoring to make sure that the community gets what it needs. And so, I just want you to know that I see you, I appreciate you, and, and Godspeed. And, and, and to Bryson, I know we just got to, to know each other. I know you're a lawyer and an attorney, and I think I ran into you in a, in the new, not the new seasons, it was the Market of Choice. But I shouldn't tell people where you shop. And now I'm telling your personal business. But it was really nice to see you outside of sort of the, the community setting, but I'm also too very impressed with your ability to engage with community and your passion around it, and how you are relentless and very thoughtful. And, and, and you, you also are very determined to get the work done. So, I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. I'm appreciative, and again, this is not a goodbye. This is a see you later. Please let's stay connected. I hope to continue to support, continue to support the work of Prosper Portland, and we're building, right? I'm, I'm, I'm building, so, let's stay connected. I appreciate you all. Much love to all of you. Be well and stay safe. And thank you for this opportunity, and again, thank you to the mayor, Mayor Wheeler as well. That's it, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Moreland Capuia, and we all, we all wish you the very best and the best of luck back there to your family as well. So, that's great. We look forward to, we look forward to updates. So, all right. Well, does anybody have anything else they'd like to add, or any last-minute comments? If not, I will use my, my, my work-at-home gavel and say, "There be no, there being no further items on the agenda, the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is now adjourned." Thanks to everybody.